Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, in compliance with NJSA 10:4, the Open Public Meetings Act, notice that this duly and regularly scheduled meeting of the Jackson Township Board of Adjustment has been published and posted in all appropriate locations.
Excellent. Roll call.
Here.
Ms. Fritsch, here. Ms. Hurley.
Here.
Ms. Camello.
Here.
Russell.
Here.
Ms. Bradley.
Here.
Mrs. Spolto.
Here.
Mr. Costanzo.
Here.
Mr. Najari.
Present. Okay, do we have any resolution?
One.
One resolution.
Yeah. Did they get that to you? Mr. Chairman, Resolution Number 202212, Resolution Approving the Phase 1 Amendment, Preliminary and Final Site Plan Amendment for the Adventure Crossing Commercial Recreational Facility, Block 3001, Lots 2, 3, and 4. Eligible to vote are Ms. Fritsch, Mr. Hurley, Ms. Camello, Ms. Russell, Ms. Bradley, Mr. Costanzo, and Mr. Najari.
Okay, I need a motion in a second. Motion approved. And a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Ms. Fritsch.
Yeah.
Mr. Hurley.
Yes.
Ms. Camello.
Yes.
Ms. Russell.
Yeah.
Ms. Bradley.
Yeah.
Mr. Costanzo.
Yes.
Mr. Najari.
Yes. How about minutes? Do you approve?
Approval of minutes from the regular meeting of February 16, 2022. Eligible are Mr. Book, Ms. Fritsch, Mr. Hurley, Ms. Russell, Ms. Bradley, Mr. Costanzo, Mr. Najari.
All right, I need a motion in a second, please.
Move to approve.
Second.
Yeah, a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Book.
Yes.
Ms. Fritsch.
Yeah.
Mr. Hurley.
Yes.
Ms. Russell.
Ms. Bradley.
Yeah.
Mr. Costanzo.
Yes.
Mr. Najari.
Yes. Is that everything? Okay, now we're moving our way down. We have announcements. You want to make those announcements?
Vouchers.
Pay her first.
All right, let's go to the back. Yeah, let's get her. She's smiling. Oh, let's get her big. Okay. Vouchers, please. We have two that have been submitted. We have one for $250, and that's for King reporting. And for our secretary, King reporting, we have $150. I'll need a motion in a second on the bill.
Move to approve both bills. Pay the bills.
Second.
Yeah, a motion in a second on the bills. I need a roll call.
Mr. Book.
Yes.
Ms. Fritsch.
Yeah.
Mr. Hurley.
Yes.
Ms. Camello.
Yes, sorry.
Ms. Russell.
Yeah.
Ms. Bradley.
Yeah.
Mrs. Spolto.
Yes.
Mr. Costanzo.
Yes.
Mr. Najari.
Yes.
Yes, so ladies and gentlemen, there are a number of announcements this evening. A number of matters are being carried. I'll start first with the matters of discussion. I know Mr. Pfeffer just walked in. The matter of discussion number one, which was noticed for this evening, Cataline Holdings LLC. There is a material witness as part of presentations who became unavailable this evening. In addition, for additional, for other reasons to allow the board to perhaps have a better opportunity to read some of the submissions that had gone into the office but not necessarily didn't get to the board. The applicant is asking if the matter be adjourned just one cycle to the March 16, 2022 meeting.
They aren't available that March, that meeting. It's the holiday. So I would just ask if there'd be a first meeting in April, if that works.
The April 6 meeting?
Yes.
That would be fine. No, no, it's their delay, so there's no cause for us. So with that, I'll make the announcement. It's on for a matter of discussion, Cataline Holdings LLC, Block 2101, Lot 16 and 17. That was a request for reconsideration of a denial of the use variance. That matter is being carried to the April 6, 2022 meeting without the requirement of further notice of the, of or by the applicant. The next request for an adjournment is the 508 Burke LLC. The applicant has also requested that that matter be carried to the May 4, 2022 meeting. This would be the third time this is carried. The board is generally asked that we notice occur in that particular circumstance. Anyone know what specific reason why it was asked to be carried? Just, I don't have it in front of me. Not 508, just to put it on the record.
They're gonna, they're gonna, they are going to renotice because they're amending their application to, they want the board to reconsider one of the conditions of the use variance.
They needed to renotice.
So they're gonna be renoticing anyway.
Renotice, okay.
So with that, and particularly since they're gonna renotice through the chairman, so long as there's no objection for members of the public who are here this evening, 508 Burke LLC, the major subdivision, Block 3601, Lot 1933, 34, 35, and 40, that matter will be carried to the May 4, 2022 meeting. That matter must be renoticed. Next, Miles 2 LLC. They are also asking that this matter be carried to the April 6, 2022 meeting. That matters, this matter's been carried on a number of occasions.
This was actually only carried to this night because we were trying to accommodate the applicant because we've been on a bunch of agendas. We had asked, because originally the Swanbourne application was gonna be first, and we said, we could try and get to it. I'm here anyway. I did not know that my engineer was not available that night, so it wasn't a matter of that we were coming here to go. Yes, we're carrying. If you want me to renotice, I will. I'm just telling you, it was not a normal scenario where we're not ready. It's just that we tried to get it.
That refreshed my recollection, quite frankly.
So give me a recommendation.
Well, I don't see reason to have him renotice, but it's up to the board.
So the notices listed here are incorrect? I mean, not the notices, the prior carries? I mean, going back to June 2.
When's the last time you renoticed, is the question, if you remember?
I do not bring the file with me. Is it? I could renotice if it's easier for everybody, but we've never even opened our, we haven't really started this application.
No, I understand.
It's been carried because.
Yeah, there's, there's been no testimony, I believe, is carried a couple of times based on the overload of our agendas was primary reason.
It's been as much on us than on them. So, you know, I don't want to overburden the applicant. Just mark it that if it's adjourned again, it would have to be.
It'll be noticed. It's not a problem.
Yeah, he's right.
April 6.
So ladies and gentlemen, members of the public, Miles 2 LLC, Block 2603, Lot 18. That matter has been carried to the April 6, 2022 meeting. The applicant need not notice. The applicant has waived time through April 30, 2022. And I should note that the Burke matter, just to clear the record up, the applicant also has waived time through May 31, 2022. The next matter being carried as well is the Swanbourne LLC matter. That matter must be renoticed. There was a error in, a purported error in the notice, so to clean that up. That matter too is being carried to the April, to the May 4 meeting. That application will be renoticed for any member of the public who is here, though. Swanbourne LLC, the preliminary final major subdivision, as it's marked on the agenda, it'll have further details the next time it's here, Block 20, 2701, and Block 2801, Lot 3-18910111121516171828. The RG2 zone, that matter is being carried to the May 4, 2022 meeting. That matter must be renoticed. And lastly, Mr. Chairman, the 26 Whiteville Road LLC matters, Block 19501, Lot 21. That matter has been asked to be carried to the March 16 meeting. This is their first request for a, for an adjournment. So without objection, I don't hear any objection again through the chairman. So members of the public, 26 Whiteville Road LLC, Block 19501, Lot 21. That matter is being carried to the March 16, 2022 meeting without the requirement, excuse me, of further notice. The applicant has waived time through March 31, 2022.
Beautiful. I was there in the public. Anybody listening, any of these things, say you're out there. I just want to clarify that you're gonna be here for one meeting that will happen. Okay, everybody clear? Okay, I just want to make sure everybody understands. All right, let's move forward. We don't have anything else. I want to square in the profession.
Gentlemen at the table, thank you for raising your right hand. Do each of you silently swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions, comments you're about to present before the board represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Sorry, when Mr. Hill.
Evan Hill, Board Engineer.
Ernie Peters, Board Planner.
Jeffrey Puporo, Zoning Officer.
Frank Miskovitz, Board Traffic Engineer. Just, just for the record, Chairman, there were several of these applications that were originally scheduled for back in January, and the board asked me to kind of finish them up, and it's been carried and carried. So I talked to Ernie, so this will be the last meeting for me, and so he'll be taking over on these unfinished applications. That's okay. Enjoy, I enjoy seeing your faces.
Thank you. You know how to get them. All right, so the first application, you got a, come on up. A, A, A and A.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Adam Pfeffer, turn on behalf of the applicant, A&amp;A Truck Parts, Inc. The application this evening is to construct a contractor's outdoor storage facility where outdoor storage is a permitted principal use. We are not proposing a, there's no building proposed on site. It's just the property, and then we'll have Mr. McFarlane walk us through the application and the justifications. With that, jump right in.
Mr. McFarlane, thank you for raising your right hand as your clients are walking in there, Mr. Pfeffer. Do you, do you silently swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last, and through the chairman, your credentials to his and the board's satisfaction?
Sure, it's Graham McFarlane, M-A-C-F-A-R-L-A-N-E. Professional engineer, professional planner, certified municipal engineer, principal of Professional Design Services. I previously been qualified and testified before this board on many occasions. Tonight, I'll be offering testimony for both professional engineering and professional planning matters.
Your credentials are accepted by this board, continue.
Thank you. Well, it's. Correct. To start with the application, the property is known as Block 2401, Lot 8, located on Progress Place in the west, the western part of town. We do have Exhibit A1 up on the, up on the screen. That's an aerial map of the, of the project. It was taken in October 2021, so it's a current aerial photograph. You can see the site outlined in yellow on, on the aerial, pretty much centered on the, on the exhibit. The site is adjacent to the Township's Park and Ride Facility, which has frontage on Progress Place. Behind the site is Route 195 running east-west across the, across, across the map. There are significant freshwater wetlands that, that occupy the site as well as the property next door, property west of the, of the subject premises. But again, you can see the park and ride facility just to the east of the subject premises, which is a, you know, a parking lot for, for commuters. Anthony, you can go to A2 for me. A2 is the, the site plan that we've submitted to the, to the board in support of the application. I believe it's dated December 16 of, of 2020. This plan, we just added some color to show the portion of the site that's occupied by both freshwater wetlands in, in dark green and by wetlands buffers in the, in the lighter shade of green. Our proposal is very, very simple. The property is in the LM zone, but our proposal is to build a, a parking lot for the storage of trucks and other equipment, trucks, trailers, roll-off containers, shipping containers, construction equipment such as backhoes, excavators, skid steers. We're not proposing any, we're not, not proposing to construct any building on a premises because the property is so restricted by freshwater wetlands. We, we believe that, that, that this property is not well-suited for, for the construction of a building. We only have about 140 feet of usable property from the property line to the wetlands corridor here. The required building setback is 100 feet. So if one were to put, put the building setback line in and then, then try to, try to find a building that would work within the confines of, of the zone and what, what the zone plan is really calling for, it's just, it's just not feasible. So there are a lot of unique characteristics to this property that make, that make this application to just have it utilized for, for storage of, of equipment and some materials, a viable operation. Any trucks or vehicles to be parked on the site would be functional, operational, and registered, so it's not gonna function as a, as a junkyard or anything along, along those, along those lines. Just some statistics, the property is about 4.9 acres in total. We have slightly less than one acre at the front of the site that's, that's uplands or, or which is usable. We're proposing to occupy, it's actually about 0.7 acres of the site will be occupied by the parking area, which represents, represents about 14% of the site. As to some of the particulars related to the, to the planning aspects of the, of the application, the Jackson Township Master Plan talks about how the housing stock is now more balanced and essentially satisfied. But the intent of this LM zone is to provide for development of light industrial and corporate office development along Route 195 corridor and to, and to support commercial development. All the properties located along Progress Place are zoned LM. And there are, of course, existing industrial uses located west of the site as well as north of the site across Progress Place. Township Park and Ride is located immediately east of the site. In addition to the constraints imposed by the freshwater wetlands, this property is not located in a sewer service area. Any development out here would be served by, would be served by a septic system. That's another limitation imposed by this property that makes its development for a, for a commercial building very, very, very limited. As to the applicant's proposal to utilize the project or the property for, for bulk storage, it's interesting to point out that, that bulk storage is permitted in the LM zone as an accessory use to other, you know, to a, to a, to another principal use. It is not permitted as, as a principal use, and that's actually why we're here tonight in front of, in front of, in front of this board. The ordinance, local ordinance defines bulk storage as stockpiling or warehousing of materials which may or may not be enclosed within a structure, including but not limited to sand, gravel, dirt, asphalt, lumber, pipes, plumbing supplies, metal, concrete, and insulation. So the ordinance does anticipate outdoor storage in its particular zone, but again, it does not allow it as a, as a principal use, so that's why we're here tonight, seeking, seeking this relief. As to the purposes of the zoning, as defined by the, by the municipal land use law, I believe there are at least three goals of the land use law that are satisfied. The first is to encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands in the state in a manner which will promote public health, safety, morals, and, and general welfare. The area along Progress Place has been designated as light industrial by the Township Master Plan and Zone Ordinance. It's our opinion that the project substantially implements objectives outlined by the master plan in that it does promote commercial, commercial use. Second is to provide adequate light air and open space. This project is developing only about 14% of the property, does not propose any, not propose any structures, would not have any negative impact to light air and open space, and so much of the property would be left undeveloped in its natural state. And the third is to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of agricultural, residential, recreational, commercial, and industrial uses, public and private according to their requirement, environmental requirements and, and constraints. Our opinion is that the use substantially conforms to the light industrial standard while also preserving open space in accordance with the applicable environmental regulations that are, that are in effect. As to negative criteria, there, there are two, two products to be satisfied. One is that the project would not create any substantial detriment to the public good, and the second is that it would not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan or the ordinance. I believe that both of those products are satisfied by this application. Again, we're just proposing outdoor storage in a manner consistent with a neighboring property and to support a, a local business and to support commercial operations. There are some, some bulk variances proposed with the application as well. Several of them are related to, related to security fencing. What our proposal is to erect a security fence around the perimeter of the prop, of the, of the parking area. Our, our client would like to have an eight-foot fence with privacy slats also with, with barbed wire on the top. Our client does have other similar facilities in the township, and he feels very strongly that that is necessary to provide proper security for this application, similar to the other properties that he does manage and operate. So those have been granted on previous applications, being as this is in an industrial area next to, you know, next to a park and ride and next to a, a wetlands corridor. We believe that that is a, is an appropriate request for this, for this application. The ordinance does require that all items be stored in a completely enclosed building, and we're not proposing any building, so we are requesting the outdoor storage of the equipment as we have discussed. I believe there are a couple others that, that Mr. Peters may have identified in his review letter, but we can, we can go, we can go through those. So next I'll refer to Mr. Peters' letter dated September 24 of 2021. And Mr. Peters first summarizes the application where he points out some of the highlights of the, of what the applicant is requesting as to bulk storage and, and properly documents what is requested by the, by the applicant. One item for clarification, the bulk, bulk storage of materials that is proposed will be limited to 10 feet. I believe our statement of operations indicated that the bulk storage would be 20 feet, but that was an error. So the bulk storage would be limited to, would be limited to 10 feet in accordance with ordinance requirements. There are no racks or structures proposed for any of the bulk storage. Anything, any materials to be stored would be done so just on the ground or maybe, or again, or maybe on some pallets that would not exceed the, not exceed the 10-foot height. Mr. Peters also discusses some other requirements of the LM zone such as truck loading and unloading facilities, which are, are not applicable to this project since there is no building proposed. Off-street loading area, similar comment, there's no, no building proposed, so there's no need for off-street loading area. He, he points out screening where, where a commercial project that butts a residential zone, which is not applicable to this, to this particular application. He also points out a comment about industrial waste, and there is no waste proposed with this, with this application. So I believe that we, I've addressed most of the comments that were identified in his letter, and I'm sure he'll want to have a couple things clarified or discussed a little further. Then we also have a letter from Mr. Hill dated October 18, 2021, where Mr. Hill discussed some of the technical merits of the application. We are not proposing sidewalk along the site frontage. There is no other sidewalk along Progress Place, so the applicant, of course, would be bound to contribute to the pedestrian safety fund in accordance with ordinance requirements. The applicant would like the ability to, to possibly lease some of the space to, to other tenants or other users, so we would like to retain that as a, as an option for this, for this particular, particular application. As to a, a technical, technical comment or two, Mr. Hill suggested that we possibly consider adding four-foot fencing around the detention basin, the small detention basin located at, at the front of the site. This detention basin is only two and a half feet deep from the, from the curb. It's my, my opinion that we don't need to provide safety fencing for a basin which is, which is so shallow, so we're looking to be relieved of that particular comment. We would agree to address the other comments that he's identified in his letter.
I have a question. I'm talking to you, Professor. If you're not happy about the premises, it's a conspiracy. That's a conspiracy, it's a blind thing. I have a thought.
Mr. Chairman? I'd also ask, Mr. McFarlane, Mr. Pfeffer, I don't recall that barbed wire was in the application. So I question whether or not, if there's relief necessary from it, they didn't notice for it. My recollection is the barbed wire wasn't part of the submission.
Our, our client has just indicated he'll remove the barbed wire fence.
Okay.
That's fine, that's fine.
Here's the other issue. You guys are leasing, you want leasing areas, you're gonna be leasing.
Same type of use, yeah.
So how many trucks are you considering on this week's problem?
The applicant, they're taxing down.
Is that inclusive?
I'm sorry.
Yep. The applicant indicated that the maximum amount of, of trucks that would be on the site would be 30 at any time, and we would agree, should the board vote in favor, that that would be a condition of approval.
So you're talking about 30 either, because I'm looking at your statement of operations, 30 registered vehicles.
Correct.
Trucks, trailers, roll-off containers, shipping containers, or construction equipment. The total number of all that stuff would be 30.
Yes, it'd be 30 pieces.
Leasing people?
Yes.
And what's on these containers?
What's on?
Containers, inside of the container.
I said, what's in them?
You don't know, right?
Construction materials.
All right, that's a, that's a real basic answer, because you don't know what you're gonna lose.
So, man, follow up, and then I'm sure the board will follow up further. As some folks recall, with construction materials, are, is it organic materials that will emanate an odor? Is it, is it, is it old sheet rock that's sitting, gonna sit outside? I mean, there's gonna be nobody on site to maintain. The question that the board, I perceive, is having, or a question, is no gonna be. The question that the board, I perceive, is having, or a question, is no gonna be, no one gonna be necessarily on site every day. I'll let him finish first.
Can I swear in the applicant, so he could answer these questions?
Sure, but let me finish first, so he has the full thing.
Yeah.
So the, one issue is that there's gonna be no one on site every day to monitor what's going on on site. And I perceive a issue the board may have is as much as potentially some of the planning arguments have some merit, it is right next door, guys, it, it is right next door to a location that is open and notoriously inviting the public, right? That park and ride. And as, as much as parking vehicles for a parking ride seems similar, seems similar to parking vehicles for the storage in which you're talking about, it's a completely different type of folk coming in and out. So with that, Mr. O'Connell, if you raise your right hand. Sir, thank you for raising your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. And for the record, can you give us your full name, spell your last, and your affiliation with the applicant?
Yes.
John, you can sit.
John O'Connell, ninety-four Hendrickson Road in Freehold Township.
And your, your affiliation with ANA?
ANA Truck Parts, correct.
John, you were the owner, you were the president?
I'm the president.
Thank you. John, you could, you could have a seat. The, the board had some questions, as you just heard. One, as to the management and I guess general operations of the site. And then two, about the actual items that are stored in the facility, be it, excuse me, be it a truck or any, or any other items. If you can, just give us a general overview to the board.
Please give me questions that you need. Give me, feed me the questions.
Mr. Mr. Pfeffer, why, yeah, thank you.
John, as far as the operations of the site, how do you foresee that this site is gonna operate? Is there gonna be a manager there, is there gonna be an access key twenty-four-seven, all those type of questions that the board would like to know?
To be a cleanup man there once a week, papers, coffee cups, stuff like that. And truck drivers bring the trucks in, parking in an orderly fashion. What else, fellas?
So let me, let me make it a little, so let's piecemeal it. So truck drivers are coming in on an orderly fashion. Does each person who will have access have a separate key to the site?
Each, each site area where they're gonna park will be marked out.
And they have a key to get in?
They're gonna have a button to get in.
A button, okay.
Okay. And then as far as what they're parking there, they're gonna be just a little bit more broader or direct answer, as far as it's gonna be a truck, it's gonna be a construction material, a construction vehicle. If it's a material, what type of materials?
Almost everything would be tractor trailers, low-boy trailers, box trailers, flatbed trailers.
And what would they contain inside, what kind of, what kind of construction materials?
They would be coming in empty at night with dumb trailers, dumb trucks, going out in the morning, going to get their loads.
And those loads would be of what?
Those loads would be sand, gravel, so on.
And are they storing any of those on site?
Maybe on a weekend in their truck, not on a ground.
All right, so that's a little bit of convergence with the testimony we heard that some stuff might be on pallets and not higher than ten feet. So what's the answer?
I believe, and John, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe that's in the event, somebody has some, I'll use pipe as an example. If they did come, so we do have the right to store contractor materials, it wouldn't be higher than ten feet and so.
So again, though, then, following up on a concern from other applications, to be fair, is all, besides, I'm presuming, no hazardous material.
No hazardous material.
But is any of the material organic? Mulch, topsoil?
No, we're not in that business, no.
No, and we would agree, obviously, that those, we would agree that all those conditions can be, can be in the resolution of approval, should the board vote in favor.
And any lease to any, per, any spot will include the fact of what's a prohibited material?
Yes.
That'll be included?
Sean, Mr. Pfeffer, sand, gravel, millings? I, I, I wanna give you guys enough rope to hang yourselves with. Put it in the list, if it's not in the list and someone complains and Jeff goes out there, it's not on the list, it's on you guys.
Understood.
Tell us what you'd like to have out there so that we, we don't shortchange you.
If anything, there'd be some clean stone, gray stone.
Quick question, you said sand, gravel, or stone, these are gonna be in or on the vehicles or on the ground?
Sand and gravel would be in the vehicles. We have no use for that. The gray stone, if we got a soft spot, we come to a soft spot, I'll put a gray stone.
I think, um, what, what Mr. O'Connell is, is talking about when he says gray stone, it means that's gonna be the surf, the gravel surface of, of the lot. We're not proposing, as, as he explained to us when we put the application together, not proposing any storage of those raw materials, so no storage of, of sand piles, of topsoil stockpiles, or mulch stockpiles, nothing, if you wanna use the term organic, is proposed to be stored.
And if I can, just, if I could just read off from, from the statement of operations that was submitted with the application, specifically indicated here is the following activities are expressly prohibited at the site. Retail sales, rental or leasing of any vehicles or equipment on the site, manufacturing or processing, repair or maintenance activities, storage of any liquids or hazardous materials, storage of any solid waste, storage of any loose soil material, vehicle or equipment dismantling or recycling, junkyard, and overnight sleeping or any occupancy of a vehicle, of a vehicle on the site.
And just to, um, piggyback what Mr. Peters asked, a question about asphalt mill, asphalt millings for, for some, I, I assume some environmental concerns, that will certainly be added to the list as well as prohibited materials. Okay, and the, the reason I ask the question is, as you read through the statement of operations in the next paragraph, it says it's proposed to utilize the site for the bulk storage of materials and equipment by contractors, such as the equipment, vehicles, and supplies of contractors. In the one, two, three, four, five, six, oh, it says materials and supplies for use in the construction and building trades. Next paragraph says all trucks parked on the site must be functional operational registered. The maximum height of any, any materials and supplies is twenty feet. So I'm trying to get an understanding of what materials and supplies, pipe? I mean, it's outdoors, if there's not a building there, you're not gonna put sheet rock outside. I'm trying to help the board understand what the material piles are, that's all.
I would try to determine as, maybe use the phrase durable building supplies that are suitable for being stored outdoors.
So it's gonna be, potentially be a lumberyard?
No.
I'm, I'm exaggerating on purpose.
No, agreed, but you know, we didn't, we didn't talk about, you know, lumber in the, in the statement of operation.
I'm old school, but construction and building trade, people use lumber.
Agreed.
So how are you storing that? Because the board has gotten into difficulty in the past, even when sites have a manager there more than once a week, um, with delineating the storage, all, all these kind of activities. I don't wanna get hung up by it, but.
Sean, Mr. Mr. O'Connell, just advised me, he's, he's not gonna be storing any lumber. He said he may have some pallets used for storage, he may have some.
So I'm, I'm smiling not out of disrespect, but the problem is that, kind of following up, I'm gonna use Mr. Peters' language, because we wanna give you rope, is that we're trying to think through a definition of what he perceives the definition of, what is, what are supplies and materials for use in the construction and building trades that you perceive will be stored there and how will they be stored? How neatly will they be stored, how managed will they be stored? Is one consideration that the board has is notwithstanding the fact that right next door is a huge parking lot for park and ride, that it is inviting the public. And one obligation that the board has, and I have particularly, is to protect code enforcement from receiving phone calls from folks who use the park and ride and say that place next door is a mess. And so we need some definitions so that when that call comes, Mr. Proporo and the zoning off and the, you know, the enforcement go out and say, this is what was approved. He's, he's right on spot, Mr. or Ms. Member of the public, that's what we're looking for.
I agree with you a hundred percent, I think it's tough to define something for, for all the unknowns and, and so working together. So one, we're proposing a, a fence with a privacy slot. So as far as seeing in, that's gonna be a little bit easier, it's not gonna be worried about, the whole place looks like a, when the fence opens up, when someone goes in, it's somewhere you look in, but generally speaking, when you drive past it, it's gonna be a enclosed area, that's A. B, I think this one might be easier saying the things that are not allowed. As a practical standpoint, there's no building. So like we said, sheet rock, we can store sheet rock, because it's gonna be, if we did, it'll get ruined in the first rain. Lumber, we're agreeing, we're not providing lumber, hazardous materials, we're not doing any of that. So as far as, it's talking about the things that are permitted, it might be easier to say things that we are not gonna be storing. And, and we are open, we're, I know we're not coming here saying, just tell us what you want, we're, we're trying to make the best application. It, it is a little bit of a tough definition in terms of contractor materials, but I believe, and, and correctly from, the majority of the site is gonna be filled with these trucks and not really the smaller portion would be the materials.
The easier way to solve it is just say that all materials will be stored at least in any shipping or roll-off containers.
The caveat being, I believe, there might be some stone or some pipes that could be very neatly piled without any issue and are no envi, that are not environmentally sensitive issue.
I'll be done, taking over too many roles from the.
Mr. Pfeffer, we talked about leasing the space, will there be any sort of, will there be segregated areas by, by fencing or something inside? I, I don't wanna say we don't care, but if we're leasing it to different people, is there gonna be a need at some point for the leased space to be separated or segregated from the rest of the site? So will at some point someone be putting another set of fences in there with a lock on it? Because one's yours, one's mine, one's Mr. O'Connell's.
It's indicated that if there are, if there is more than one tenant and they need to segregate, they use concrete barriers, Jersey barriers, thank you.
Thank you. Just for the record, because we're parking equipment out there, there won't be any vehicle repairs, above-ground storage tanks, fuel oil, any of that, fuel or oil?
None of that.
Mr. Chairman, if I might just jump ahead to, to the planning issue. Mr. McFarland put it on the record fairly straightforward. This use is permitted as what's known as an accessory use. So most of us who live in a single-family detached home would understand that an accessory use to a single-family detached home is a shed, a pool, those types, sorts of things. They're customarily incidental to a principal use. What you can't do when you have a single-family lot is just have a pool on it. You can't have just a shed on it. It has to be accessory to something, a principal use. In this particular case, Mr. McFarland has made the argument, very well, I think, that they're not putting a building up. Basically, it is just a storage area, which, again, not the worst thing in the world, in an industrial park with other similar type uses, as long as we have controls over them. And I wanted the board to have an, an understanding of what the use issue was. The site planning issue, we sort of iron out, we go back and forth, is there a fence, is it this, is it that? But from a planning perspective, they're here because there's an accessory use with no principal use. There's outdoor storage, but there's no building. Which, again, it's odd, it's unique, but given as Mr. McFarland indicated, the very limited amount of land, and I'll, I'll just hand out, I'll, I'll put up the colored rendering that Mr. Pfeffer pulled out. You know, a significant portion of the site is encumbered with environmentally sensitive areas. So even if they wanted to put a building up, it'd be too close to the street and it would limit their ability to use it for bulk storage, which is permitted. So they're doing something that is permitted in a fashion that requires them to come here and get a use variance. They're doing a, a permitted accessory use without a principal use. That's really the point I wanted to make from a planning perspective.
Mr. Chairman, and just to build, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Mr. Peters, if you could clarify that for me or Mr. McFarland. Are you suggesting that if, for the purpose of this hypothetical question, if a building was put on site, that every one of these accessory uses that he's proposing to store here would be permitted?
I don't know every single one, but, but bulk storage is a permitted accessory use in this zone. So we might talk about the setback from the street of the.
I get the site plan, but if I'm looking at his list, if, if he had, if he had the building up, could he store trucks, would that be allowed? Could he store trailers, could he store roll-off containers, could he store shipping containers? Could he store his construction equipment, backhoe excavator, I'm gonna write down his list, and materials and supplies for use in construction and building trades?
I'm happy to answer the question, I think the applicant should answer it, and then I can comment on his answer as opposed to giving the testimony.
Fair enough.
Sorry.
Right, I think I understand where you're, where you're trying to go with, with the, with the logic of that question. And the short answer, I would say, is yes, if there was, if there was a building on the site which was involved in this particular business, what the ordinance allows, that it allows for outdoor storage as an accessory use. Definition of accessory use means it has to be, you know, connected to the principal use on the, on the, on the property. So if Mr. O'Connell was to build a, a small, I don't know, a small, let's call it a management building that was involved in the, you know, storage of materials business, storage of, of, of trucking business, in some argument, that then becomes a principal use is the building, the accessory use is the outside storage. It would be upside down because.
If he built a gatehouse, it might work.
Right, that's where I was gonna go, I mean, we, we can make an argument that we can build a five-by-five gatehouse and, and there's our principal use and now we have a, an accessory use, which is all the trucks he wants to store because he manages it from that very small building. Now, that's not, not reasonable and doesn't, I, I, I think, really serve any benefit to what we're trying to achieve here. But it is kind of a, an argument that one, one could, you know, one could make.
Thank you. Is a gatehouse a permitted use?
Well, Mr. Mr. Peters was the one that used the term gatehouse, and I kinda jumped on it, but I think what we mean is a small building.
So if he created, if he built an office for trucking business, accessories aside, would the accessory uses would be permitted?
And we'd be at the planning board. And we'd be at the planning board as a permitted use.
I have a couple of questions, may I?
Beautiful, go ahead.
How large is the area that is, that is, the buildable area itself?
It, it's about zero-point-seven acres or so, and the site in total is about four-point-nine.
It is, huh?
Yeah, this, this portion of the site to be developed is about zero-point-seven acres.
All right, so on, on those point-seven acres, you've got thirty trucks, you've got areas that you're going to store materials, that storage area of materials will not be higher than ten feet. You're gonna lease an area to other contractors, we don't know where. How do I know that you can fit thirty trucks on this area? How do I know that these thirty trucks can safely navigate the property in point-seven acres? How do I know that the materials that'll be, that are going to be stored are controlled? They're just flowing all over the place, I, I think I heard there were not gonna be any walls or anything of that nature, correct?
Well, I'll, I'll try to, um, try to dissect that into a couple of different pieces. One is, Mr. O'Connell.
Because I got a couple of other pieces, you may wanna dissect.
Sanitary facilities. What kind of sanitary facilities are proposed for these truckers that are coming in and dropping their things off? I hope, you know, we're not looking at trees here.
Well, there are not, there was no building proposal there. There are no sanitary, uh, facilities proposed at, at this time. Um, you did ask a series of, of questions. Previously, I'm going to try to, try to hit the ones that I, I can remember.
Let me give you one or two more. I'm sorry, but my age, I forget.
I'm definitely not going to remember them all.
How about debris? I mean, I think Mr. O'Connell testified that, uh, there'll be some there, someone there once a week to pick up trash. What are we doing with it? And what are we doing in the, in the, in the week prior to somebody picking it up? Where's it going? What's happening to it? And I think that's it. As far as limited questions is concerned.
Uh, well, actually, the last question first, Mr. O'Connell tells me he's going to put a dumpster on site. So it's not shown on our site plan right now, but we will add a dumpster to the site, uh, for, for trash collection. Uh, you asked, um, you know, you identified quite a few points. I'll try to hit the ones that, that I remember. Um, we talk about the, about the leased spaces and I'll, I'll make the, um, the discussion that this is similar to multi-tenant buildings that we deal with. Uh, you know, Mr. O'Connell wants the ability to lease the space based upon market conditions. Uh, when he opens this, he may not have to lease the space to anybody. May, maybe what, what he is doing and, and has a need for vehicle storage, he may be using the entire property. A year from now, those conditions may change. He may have somebody calling him, looking for space. And he says, yeah, I, I can let you have, you know, two spots over on, on progress place. You could put two trucks there or three trucks there or, or whatever it is based upon, uh, particular needs at any given time. If that happens. Correct. Potentially, if, if that happens, he would delineate those, those spaces with Jersey barriers, the same ones that are used on highway that he can, he can move and manage throughout the site based upon the specific economic and, uh, market conditions and, and viability of the, uh, of, of the project. Um, you asked about solid waste storage and, you know, sitting here with Mr. O'Connell, we agree that a, uh, a dumpster should be provided for any garbage collection for drivers that come in and may have some, some small garbage to be accumulated. And of course, that would be, uh, that would be picked up. What were the other points that you were, uh, asking about? Sanitary, I said, there's currently none proposed. There's no building proposed. There's no sanitary facilities proposed at this time. It's strictly just a, uh, just a parking facility. Um, you know, he could use, he could provide porta-johns. Um, but we're not proposing any, uh, any dedicated facilities.
How about the control in the storage area? These are the, the internal traffic, you know, 30 trucks, trailers going in and out.
Well, the, uh, again, the, the size and the nature of the vehicles can change over time. It could be, uh, you know, one month it could be all dump trucks and next month it could be all flatbed trailers. Uh, so that's going to be up to Mr. O'Connell managing, managing the property on a regular basis.
I guess my concern is how many storage areas are proposed? Testimony is it won't be higher than 10 feet? Are they, is it going to be one storage area? What's the size of the storage area? Are there going to be five storage areas? Is that going to conflict with internal traffic? I don't know. That's the question.
Well, I don't, I don't think we, I don't think we truly know the answer to, to that question at this time. Uh, again, we're, Mr. O'Connell is trying to create a space that serves the needs uh, of, of this municipality. Uh, we've all seen what's happened at Glories over the years where they've had five, count the number, two, 10, five trailers, trucks parked on that site. Uh, Mr. O'Connell is, is providing an opportunity here for them to be in an organized fashion. Uh, it's something that's approved by, by Land Use Board.
However, see, and Mr. Pfeffer knows, I can't help myself either because he knows. So you open the door to the issue, which is that there's no organization shown on the plan right now. So as much as the board may accept your client's good faith and testimony, um, it, and there's new members here, but without the, the detail that the board is looking for, I want to overcomplicate this, but you may be better off for some surety sake, asking that the matter either be bifurcated or briefly carried. So you can just put some of these details on a piece of paper. I'll, I'll let Mr. Hill who articulates this stuff. Mr. Hill, I'll let you articulate this much better than I normally do. Because I used the wrong words, but it's like a variance plan, just to kind of.
No, so, so what we have here is that, is a site plan. It's a site plan app. It's a use variance with a site plan application. So we have that information. What we're asking him to do is to ultimately agree to revise the plan at some point, whether it's either prior to another hearing or possibly during resolution compliance to delineate a driveway aisle and delineate storage areas for trucks and to delineate the, um, you know, areas that could be leased. So we're really, we're looking for the areas to make sure that there's safe egress and entry and egress from it. And then the balance of that would be for storage. Uh, that's consistent with all the other applications this applicant has had in front of this board as well. We've asked for the same exact information and they've complied, right? His facility on right de Bao was in front of this board. His facility on Bismarck was in front of this board and his facility on Diamond was in front of this board. So this isn't anything new. However, whether or not, um, the boards are going to have to figure out and determine if that information is required to further process this application tonight or if they have to come back later. I think if the, I think the board's direction would be, could be, if the applicant agrees to delineate the driveway aisle and the balance of the site as storage, then he's only, he'll be limited to whatever the balance of that storage area can be for what he wants to use, right? He won't be able to put 50 trucks in there if it can only accommodate 30 or 20.
Wouldn't it be simpler to just build a small office building? The accessory uses would be permitted. And then there are only bulk variances and then he goes to play.
It'd be this, but he'd still have to prepare the same information that you're asking for. And I'm sure that board would be, uh, would be asking for the same type of detail. Is, is it easier or not? I think it's easier if we've.
Yeah, but he has, he has a tougher burden here than he would before the planning.
Correct. That I agree with, yes.
If I could, uh, to, could, could add some commentary to what Mr. Hill just suggested. Um, of course, we've, we've had, we would have no objection to, uh, delineating a drive aisle on, on this plan. That would be kept free and clear so that it's always accessible. Uh, the second part of the question really, really function, really, uh, targets the, um, the amount of the, 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 uh, site that's going to be leased and available for us. What I, what I'd like to ask is that maybe we get a, a five-minute recess just for three of us to talk about that and see if we can give the board some clear direction on, on how important the lease space is to Mr. O'Connell. Then maybe we can, um, make a decision on that particular item.
Through the board, through the chair. Be, before you do that, uh, there, there's a couple of other issues as well that it might be helpful to, uh, to address. One is uh, in terms of the statement of, in terms of the statement of operations and how this is going to be operated, the testimony that I'm hearing leads me to believe that trucks will be arriving basically in the form of some type of a tractor to pull into your yard and then to pull out one of these truck, these tractors, roll-off containers or shipping containers and to pull it out. Or at the end of the day or the beginning of the day, whatever it is, some type of a vehicle like that is coming in to drop it off. So there's, there's no employees or, 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 or other third parties that are coming to this location, parking their truck there, all right? And leaving their truck there. Then, then picking up a truck from your yard, doing their thing for the day, dropping the truck back off and then getting in their vehicle. So there's, there's nobody that's going to be leaving their own personal vehicle at the site. That's, that's what I'm picking up from, from your application. The second thing that I, I, I would like to have addressed as well, it's not clear in here, but I think it's implied that you're not going to allow recreational vehicles to be parked in here. You're not going to allow, uh, boats, trailer boats to be parked in here. So if a homeowners association wanted to, uh, to get, to get permission to park all of the vehicles that they're not allowed to park in their association, those vehicles are going to be prohibited. All right? Okay, thank you.
Okay, we'll clarify those as well.
Also, Mr. Pfeffer, your, your client has, uh, his presentation. He stated that when he gets some blacktop or some rocks or some stones, he's just going to lay it down wherever the low area, high area, that's better. So there's a contamination ordinance that we have set for that will disallow people bringing in stuff wherever they bring it in. A contaminated jack. So, but he said he's just going to take that truck and dump it wherever he wants it, on his property, he said it.
I don't think.
So I heard it.
I don't think that.
I, I, I think what Mr. O'Connell was talking to was maintaining the gravel parking area. Just for, just for the record, he, we.
Where do you get that truck load from? Is it coming from another contaminated area?
No, no, no. We're just, just, just clean stone for the gravel parking area. We're proposing a gravel, gravel parking surface for this lot.
No, Mr. Chairman, I, I think what they're trying to do is unfortunately, Mr. O'Connell conflated a question and he clarified it though, and you know, I don't mean to testify for him either, that the, the material that the applicant was talking about was because they're requesting that the parking be gravelled, that he understands that he must maintain that gravel parking. He also more fully understands that he can't just dump millings and asphalt and stuff and he has no intention of doing it. Do you understand? As long as that's clear.
Correct, 100%. On the same page.
Agreed.
Um, so it's safe to say that with the operation of this, you'll have trucks coming early morning, late evening, in and out. Um, you have an eight-foot fence, nothing we stack more than 10 feet. But it's safe to say that a, your typical tractor trailer is taller than 10 feet. Um, and will be seen, but from a security and safety perspective, you only have somebody there once a week and you have no lighting on site. So when they're coming in, unless I miss something, that there's a lighting proposal. I know you have electric there because you're going to have a gate with a button.
We, we do have site lighting proposed.
Okay.
No, I had, for, it's in our statement of operations, specifically the last item that's under prohibited, uh, prohibited overnight seeping or any occupancy of a vehicle on the site. Uh, yeah, I guess that's the best way. Yeah, I was gonna say, I think. I was gonna say, do you want to see if there's any public here? So if we have any other comments we could address. Great, if they have any comments, I don't know.
I'll open it up to the public.
Okay. So we'll take a 10 or 10-minute recess, please.
So formally, you've opened that to the public, seeing no public on this application. You public portion.
Well, let's for a 10-minute, let's for a 10-minute recess and we will. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, yeah, I spoke, I spoke with the applicant, um, and a professional. So a couple of items. Number one, just knock off the easy ones, dumpster, we're in agreement. Um, a porta-john, we're in agreement. Um, the, uh, as far as the building, the concept of that, just, just so we're clear, um, Graham, if you can to show with the, with the laser pointer, the, the building, if we met all the setbacks, we'd be in middle, basically smack middle of the usable gray area. It would kill the whole site.
Yes, if you're, if you recall, um, I testified previously, we have about 140 feet from the, uh, property line to the, uh, to the wetland, to the wetlands buffer line. The required building setback is 100 feet and then acquired, required side yards are 30 feet. So the only place one could put a building would be, you know, right, right, pretty much right there in the center of the area to be utilized. No, we're not proposing a build. Our, our testimony is that that would, um, you know, negatively impact the operation in, in total and make, you know, make the whole thing unusable essentially.
Yes, no, so I'm getting to 100%. That's, that's the big item. Um, again, so we spoke, uh, our professional opinion is again, uh, that the 30 vehicles or 30 registered items could fit without an issue. Uh, we would agree, should the board, uh, approve it during resolution compliance, as was suggested, we would have to show a dry vial circulation plan and that it all works. And if your board's engineer and planner feel that we're crazy and it doesn't work, we agree we'll have to come right back before this board, um, or modify it.
Can we talk into the mic?
Would you agree to put cameras, cameras in, um, to monitor the site? Using some modern technology?
The applicant said, indicated yes.
But Mr. Peters may not have agreed with someone.
Just the idea that building a shop while permitted requires that materials and equipment are stored within an enclosed building. So they're still here for the variance for the outdoor store anyway.
Let's, all right, we are on the same page. It, it becomes not what you're looking to do. Great, Mr. Hill.
Okay. So with respect to further refining this plan, I, I think the applicant, uh, it's my opinion that if the applicant delineates a dedicated drive aisle, driveway aisle on the plan, and then the balance of the site is labeled as storage. This, this is really a self-limiting site from that perspective. Once you identify the area that is available for storage, it's going to be up to the applicant to use that area or to stay in that area. But whether it's 10 trucks, 15 trucks, 20 trucks, 30 trucks, 10 containers, whatever that is, you've limited him to the types of things that can be stored there. The quantity is going to be whatever he can fit in that area that you've already allowed him to put use for storage. So I don't know if the quantity is super important in this case. Uh, it's the type of, of storage and it's the location of storage. Those are the two most important things in my mind. So, uh, now, what I, do we feel comfortable if they revise the plan and we review it during resolution compliance? Yeah, I would, I would say we would, absolutely. I don't, I wouldn't personally see a need for them to have to come back unless you're going to lock them into a quantity and you want him to, you want them to prove that quantity, right? So that's the only reason, that's, but that's up to you guys to deliberate on. Now, during resolution, if, if the board is satisfied with the applicant's proposal to delineate a driveway aisle and the balance of the site for storage and you're, you're, you're satisfied that he can only store certain types of material in those, in the balance of that area, there's no need for him to come back. We can do that during resolution compliance. In fact, if you look at the applications that we heard last month or two weeks ago, there was one application where, very similar to this, the board did ask for some specifics because of the types of vehicles. But on the second application, we did not ask, the board did not ask for delineation of parking spaces with, and there was tenants coming in. It was for his own business and so on. I think this would be a, I think this is a reasonable approach for this use of what I'm, what I'm just proposing.
In terms of limiting, if they said they were going to have 30 vehicles, the site's 260 feet wide, say 240 of it's usable. Nine or 10-foot wide parking spaces, there's 25 just on one side. But once they drive in, the rear of the property could be 25 parking spaces wide. And the space up by the front could be another, you know, you bring the access aisle in, it'd be another 10 or 15. So proving that they can park 30 vehicles is almost by inspection for, for the engineer. So again, if, if the board's, um, okay with limiting the number to whatever the applicant agrees to and getting the, the vehicle turning radiuses to work is, unless the board wants to see it, I don't see the need for them to come back.
Do you feel, feel comfortable in regards to what they're presenting?
Yes.
Mr. Hill, you feel comfortable going forward?
Yes, with the understanding that a driveway, uh, a driveway aisle will be delineated and the balance of.
and the balance of the site will be identified as storage.
Sympathetic with the applicant as to the problem with the size of the property. I'm sympathetic with the potential use, use as being similar to accessory uses that are permitted. But as it stands right now for me, it just seems like a haphazard application. I disagree with, from the board members' point of view, disagree with the, the professionals in that I don't know where the storage is going to be on the site. I don't know where the parking area is going to be on the site. I don't know how these trucks go in and out from the site, don't have any of the information. Uh, we don't know, there was some tests that's phoning done, indicated some testimony about lighting, I don't know. It's just, it's just a haphazard, it's almost like a grenade, here it is, and boom, it goes off, and there's stuff all over the place. I don't know, you know, there's a height testimony on, on storage of 10 feet. How is it gonna be controlled? Is, is it gonna spread over 10 feet high, but spread over 30 feet, 40 feet, 50 feet long? I don't know. Is that going to interfere with the internal circulation patterns? I don't know. To me, this is just a haphazard application. It's, it's something that the use variance should be associated with some type of not technical site plan, although I have my disagreements with whether or not site plans are required. There's an ordinance that said if there's a change in use, a site plan is required. But having said that, some kind of a, a plan that shows me that these trucks can, can navigate the premises, that the parking area where they're going to park these vehicles. I don't know that you can get 15. What are the size of the trucks, where are they gonna be located, what are the size of the parking spaces? It's gonna be gravel, so you're not gonna be able to designate unless there's some kind of block in there, something of that nature. Uh, I, I get concerned, you have these trucks coming in, if you start getting drippings, drippings into the, oil drippings into the, into the stone, what happens to the soil? I, I don't know, is that gonna be a problem? We don't even know where these trucks are gonna park. So I just, right now, I think it's a haphazard application. As far as the use is concerned, if, if it was supported by a reasonable plan that our, our code enforcement officers can go in, if there's a, a complaint, they can say, you know, these vehicles should not be here, you have too many vehicles over here, you've got storages mislocated. We don't know, so it just makes a break.
Beautiful, James, uh, Paul, I need your deliberation here, my friend.
I, I always appreciate, uh, Mr. Hurley's detailed analysis. He's got a great amount of insight, and, and often it can get me to change my, my perspective. With all of Mr. Hurley's comments and what he's sympathetic to, I too am sympathetic in that, in that same manner. I guess I'm a little less concerned over having a detailed site plan, wherein all of these delineations have to be made. I guess you could say I'm more of a mindset that it's a fairly small area, and what this applicant is gonna be able to do, and I, and I believe, um, Mr. Hill used the word self-limiting, and, and that resonates with me. If, if the applicant during resolution compliance is, is going to show where this, uh, this dedicated drive aisle is gonna be, and he wants some latitude in terms of where he can put certain things, park certain trucks, he's only gonna be able to do so much anyway within that limited, that limited area. I'm not overly concerned that he's got, he should have to identify exactly where, uh, this truck is gonna be, or exactly where this trailer is gonna be, or exactly where this roll-off container is gonna be within that limited space. I, I would leave him some latitude to work that out in resolution compliance. So, uh, on those, on that small point, you know, I differ a little bit from, from Mr. Hurley, but on the other items, I, I completely agree with Mr. Hurley. I, I did wanna hear, uh, from the applicant that there would not be recreational vehicles parked in here, that there would be, you know, boats parked in here, uh, that it's, the intention is not to lease this area out to homeowner associations so that they can, they can, uh, put their, their equipment and materials in here. And I also wanted a confirmation in terms of, of, um, of in the operation, exactly what is happening when someone comes in the morning? Are they dropping off their personal vehicles, then picking up a truck and a trailer and leaving? Or are they coming in a tractor, picking up what they're gonna take out of the storage area and driving away with that tractor? Because that's gonna make a little bit of a difference to me, because if it's intended to bring your personal vehicle and drop it off, now, I may, I may shift gears a little bit, move my position a lot closer to where Mr. Hurley is going. So for me, the, uh, the intent is, and the understanding is, that there are not gonna be personal vehicles coming and being parked at these premises.
Do you have an answer to that question?
I believe that's correct. As far as the, there are a few, there are a lot of stuff said. Boats, any stories of any boats? No.
No boats.
Right, I, I know.
What do you mean?
People be dropping off their vehicles and getting to a truck, or are they just going to come pick up a truck on their, uh, trailer, put it on?
Some of them, the wives drop the fellows off, they pick up their truck. Some of them do park the car, car where the truck is.
There's gonna be 30 vehicles on the property besides the personal vehicle?
No. No, no, nobody's leaving personal vehicles overnight.
Meg comes and gets his truck. He gets there in a, in his car, parks his car there, comes back that night with the truck, takes the car out, puts the truck in there.
We're deliberating here, board, so I need some input on your terms if we move forward.
Lynn, can you speak into your mic?
All right, Tony. Um, I said, based on what we've heard, I do think this is a good use for this site, being that there's such an extensive amount of wetlands and property they can't use. Um, I don't see the need for a building. I, I get the concept of somebody's gonna either be dropped off and take off in their truck, or they're going to park their car and leave. I understand that, um, if I understood Evan clearly, and if I didn't, please correct me, if I understood Evan clearly at resolution compliance, it would be addressed as far as identifying the driveway lane. That would be the one thing that I would, I do think should be important, especially since you're gonna have tractor trailers and cars. I can completely understand that requirement. Uh, but from my perspective, I think this is a, a great use of the site, because how much are you really gonna be able to do on this property? And Mr. Peters did point out that, um, it's large enough to accommodate the number of vehicles that you're saying it's gonna be 30, whatever that type of vehicle is. So I do think it, um, in my opinion, this is a viable project.
All right, now, Mr. Chairman, I now wanna modify what I had said before. And, and what's caused the modification in my thought process is now I know that someone is gonna drive there in their truck in the morning, and that truck is now gonna be left there. So that creates, that creates a different problem in my mind, because I thought before there would be no personal vehicles being parked. So now you've got a different traffic issue, you have a different internal, uh, internal operation issue. Uh, if somebody else is coming on site and there's a personal vehicle there, is somebody else gonna have access to the personal vehicle to move it? So now, um, now I'm more concerned than I was before about how that internal site would be operated. So now, quite frankly, my, my position is now shifted over more to what Mr. Hurley's concerns were. And, and so, Mr. Chairman, where before I was leaning one way, now I'm leaning more towards, uh, uh, what Mr. Hurley's concerns are in having a more detailed internal site operation.
And I'm trying to be in that direction.
My concern is just, as I mentioned before, and, and obviously there's a lighting plan that I personally haven't seen, um, but just the security of it, right? It's an eight foot fence, you're gonna have valuable equipment behind that fence. Um, you, you mentioned that maybe in, in compliance resolution, that's the right word, right? That there would be security cameras. You know, I just see it as an attractable nuisance, if, if, from what I heard from Mr. Gertner earlier, was that there's been issues at the park and ride, does that, is that accurate? Or no issues?
Well, I'm not aware of any issues. My point was that the park and ride invites the public.
Okay.
And so because it invites the public, you wanna make, the board would wanna make certain that the, this site maintains some level of, uh, of cleanliness of.
My, my, so my concern overall is just security of the stuff that's there, and who would be, who would desire to go there in the evening when nobody is there? And if we're taking the barbed wire piece away, and I understand why we would want that, do we create some type of, again, attraction for people to do things they shouldn't do? I do understand that the use of the, of the space, um, and we're gonna store some trucks there. Guys are gonna come in in the morning, or women are gonna come in, they're gonna drop their car off, they're gonna get their dump truck, their low boy, whatever, and they're gonna go do their work for the day, and then they're gonna store it there overnight. I, I think you're, from a leasing perspective, you're probably not going to make your money on dropping off a load of stone and keeping that below 10 foot. The, the, the desire is, is the, the physical space for somebody to store their, their construction vehicle, their work vehicle. So that's, I, I'm sort of leaning towards, it makes sense, and, and as, uh, we heard already, you know, there is very limited use that you can use on that land. And if you put a five by five building up in the middle of it, the land becomes useless. So that, that's, my, my concern is just, somebody's only there once a week to sort of oversee potentially 30 people that are there every day, in and out. So dumpster's great, porta john's great, but, you know.
Correct. Well, we agree with everything, and, and just to be clear again, we, we did submit a lighting plan, we are doing that, we will add the, the security cameras. So we're, we're on the same page.
Is there still some deliberation that you're going over with the client? Do you wanna discuss anything before we make a decision? They have issues.
Yeah, but we're in the liberation.
I don't wanna go forward.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just ask.
You want more time to?
No, I'm good, I'm good. I'm trying to get everybody home in a reasonable hour, it's the only application. So I completely hear what everyone's saying, I hear, I think, again, correct me if I'm wrong, the board generally is, 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 is in agreement with the, the type of application, the type of use. Uh, some of the concerns are, how is it gonna work, how the traffic flow? I, I believe from your own professionals and our professionals, we thought there would be sufficient to show it, uh, during resolution compliance. However, if some of the board members have a concern about that, uh, what I would request of the board, uh, again, would be to vote in favor of the application this evening, but, but hold, but toll the period, um, to vote on the actual resolution until we show that same, uh, aisle plan and possibly some parking spaces to your engineer and your planner for them to review. If they don't like it, we're good, but this way we know where we're going, as opposed to doing all of that, um, in vain. Um, I do believe, like I said, I, I got the impression everyone was in favor of it. We had asked originally to do it during resolution compliance. Um, I've done that in other townships where there was a vote, and the board just wanted to see the, you know, plan of any of the comments, we could show where the dumpster is, we could show you where the porta john will be, just to show it on the plan. So there is no, uh, unknown. That would be my, that would be my request.
I would just like to make my position clear, I, I've indicated that I am sympathetic to the use that is proposed here because of the conditions related to the site. As you probably know, and board members probably know, I'm, I'm kind of a purist when it comes to D1 variances, use variances. It should not be easy to get a use variance. There, there are proofs that have to be submitted by the applicant to support the, the case itself. If this were to go to a vote tonight, my vote would be no. If it came in with, associated with a concept plan, not necessarily a full-blown site plan, but if it came in with a concept plan to show me where certain things are, then I, I, I might be, I might be convinced, oh, yes. So just so you know where I'm going, I, you know, I've indicated I'm sympathetic to the use, but I'm not quite, I haven't convinced myself that I would, I would vote yet. So other board members might, of course. But if this was associated with some type of concept plan, I'd be more inclined to consider it. That's my only point.
Yes, Mr. Hill.
So I just, I just want everybody to be clear, this is a site plan application as well. It's, it's a, it's a use variance and site plan application. Right, okay, so site plans have been submitted, uh, what, what I wanna, I just wanna clarify, so I understand, it sounds like you just want additional detail on the site plan. Okay. Through the chair.
Yes, Steve, go ahead. Through the chair, I, I, I reviewed this application in depth, uh, the applicant has, has been more than receptive in, in our comments, and has shown that he's, he's willing to, uh, add additional, uh, items of inter, well, inter, I actually, additional items that can be addressed through the compliance resolution. I, this applicant has also been before this board before, he has other properties within the town that, uh, demonstrate his, uh, desire to do the right thing, uh, you know, um, the fact, uh, I think we've given the limited space, he's put in, he's not, he's not, uh, overbearing on the piece of property. His testimony has been, uh, forthright, and again, that the, uh, the detail of the site plan can be easily addressed through the compliance resolution, the applicant's even asked for an extension, uh, to memorialize this, so that, uh, all those steps can properly be reviewed, and if questioned, brought back to the board. I'm looking to vote in favor of this application at this time, um, we'll see how it goes.
Anybody else have any input? I'm going to, uh, ask for a motion and a second. Grab a roll call.
There's no motion.
Who? Tony.
We're here. Um, so I am in agreeance with what Lynn and Steve said, um, listening to the facts, I think it's a great use of the property. And because it's such limited use, um, I think, you know, the space would definitely fit into the plan, and I would be in agreeance to make this move forward as well.
Thank you. Last meeting, and we're gonna say goodbye to her, we're very sorry.
Yes, next meeting's my last.
Okay.
Next meeting.
I'd like to put forth, Chair, I'd like to put forth a motion to approve this application, um, as stated, is brought forth in the testimony.
Well, so, well, so the question is, subject to holding, um, the resolution, um, in abeyance, pending review of the, uh, enhanced concepts and additions to the site plan? Is that?
That, yes, thank you.
All right, so we got a motion.
We have to come back to board to present that. And it'll be integrated into.
I, it was my understanding that the professionals will review.
No, no, well, that's.
Correct, my understanding is, we will present that, um, we will send it over, put sufficient time for your professionals to review. Uh, if it's acceptable, the night that is on the agenda for, uh, adoption for the resolution, I would appear, uh, here, if there are any questions or concerns, it would be circulated to the board members. If the board members had additional concerns, we could agree at that time to make those modifications.
So, so the question, see, it's all different here, see, see, so what I would, let me just make a direct suggestion based on what I'm hearing the maker of the motion wants to do, which is, then we don't also have to hold the resolution or not hold it or whatever. The board is generally, in these kind of circumstances, in, indicated if, if, if you're gonna vote in favor of it, sub, um, that you expect administratively to review the following items, which would be brought back before, uh, the board for further, for further comment. Um, and those items would be, Mr. Hill, why don't you help me, so they're said the right way?
So there's a couple, there, there's two, I see two ways now, I'm being introduced to a third way by Mr. Pepper tonight. Typically, what happens is, when you, when, when the board approves an application with conditions, and you want things moved around, you want some additional details added to the plans, you want some additional notes, whatever it is, and whatever in our letters, right? The applicant submits all of those revised reports and documents to Ernie and I to re- The applicant submits all of those revised reports and documents to Ernie and I to review after you've already made your decision. His final approval doesn't take place until after he satisfies all of those conditions. So that's the administrative side you don't see us doing after you do a vote. The second way to do this is, if you're comfortable enough with the use variance, but want to see some additional detail on a site plan, have them revise the plans and come back and show, you know, you could vote on the use, have them come back and, and with, with, with an amended area plan is what I'm going to call it, right? Or, or putting an area plan on the site plans. That's the second option. Third option, I don't think we've ever experienced here, to be quite honest with you. I haven't since 2001, right? Which is the night of you trying to adopt a meeting.
So I'm, I'm against that.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not comfortable with that because if you have questions, now you have to, if, if, if there's questions on that, you're reopening up the testimony. So I don't like to go down that path. So I see option A or option B. Option C is, well, option A or option B, as I've laid out.
A, as denominator of, of, of the, I, I would go with the, uh, review of the professionals.
Without, without it coming back at all before. See, this is where, I'm sorry, I'm going to jump in again. I, there are some members of the board who at least want to physically see the plan so that they, well, but I don't know respectfully, based on my time here, that Mr. Costanzo, as we have a relationship, he'll listen to this. I think what you want to do, Mr. Costanzo, to feed, to, 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 um, meet a, a consensus of these, is that you want to approve the application. You want the applicant to submit the, um, the site and the revisions to the professionals and that the applicant can come back admin, for administrative review and approval so the board gets the opportunity to see it.
Yes, yes.
Do we hit it? Good job. Okay. So, we got a motion on the floor.
I'll second that motion as clarified by Mr. Gert.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second. Now we're going to do the vote.
Can we, can, can we clarify? In other words, the motion is to approve the, the use variance subject to conditions that are being imposed. And those conditions have to be reviewed by our professionals to approve and then come back in front of us.
Under administrate, administrative.
Administratively, so they don't have to know.
Essentially, we're delegating to the professionals.
No, you're not. And, and so it's not quite that. It is, you're approving the application, you're approving the site plan with the conditions. They will not meet final resolution compliance until they submit the concept plan for review of our professionals to be brought back before the board for review of the board administrative. And.
So if the board.
Which you've done before.
What, what if the, essentially, it's a, it's a use variance subject to.
So you're asking the professionals to report back to the board administratively of whether or not they've prepared, whether or not they've provided sufficient information.
To, to meet.
But they've already gotten their approval at that point.
Yeah, but they can't get resolution compliance until there's a secondary approval of the administrative.
But they're, during administrative, so this is where, again, I'm confused. During administrative approvals, the applicants typically, in a lot of cases, aren't here. It's, it's, admin approvals have historically been used for after a, after a project is approved, there are administrative changes to it.
And, and that's what I'm saying. This is, I, I think what Mr. Costanzo at least is saying, correct, now correct me if I'm wrong, is that there is sufficient information to, um, approve it. These are additional changes that you want, that the board wants to see, but.
Agreed. Uh, my, my intent of the motion is that we're, we, in theory, we're agreeing to what we, what, what we want. We want to have it modified so the final resolution shows what the board desires. And, and, and the, excuse me?
I apologize.
Because there's nobody else coming in.
I know.
For no reason.
They have, we're, we're beating this up too much.
If they have to come back after the professionals did their review to, what to approve, why don't, why don't, why don't we just ask for a concept plan and vote for the whole thing the next time?
That's a different.
That's a different motion.
That's a different motion.
I realize that.
Do you want to amend your motion?
No. No, I don't. I, I will amend, I will, I, I will amend my motion to say that I, I approve this application as set forth in this evening's meeting. And that's, that's my motion. With the app, with the app, with the, um, caveat that the applicant will, of course, submit the necessary, uh, proper documentation as requested by this board. But we are voting on this. I, um, my motion is that we are voting on this tonight. May or nay?
And we got a second. Paul just.
He gets to modify because I modify.
All right. You're right, I'm, I'm just getting busy a little bit here. I don't know how we're going to do it, but there's got to be a mechanism. I don't know what the mechanism is. I'll, I'll take my lead from, from the professionals. But I want to know and I want to see that the changes that we've requested that they've, that they've agreed to do in terms of what we previously have discussed in terms of the aisle, the storage locations, et cetera. I don't know how we assure that happens, but I want to know that that happens. And if they have to come back for us to see it to know that it happens, then that's what I want to do.
So that's one option. The second option of how, how you know what happens is force the app, ask the applicant to have that plan submitted, revised plan submitted to our, to our offices prior to the resolution being adopted. And we'll show you the plan before you vote to adopt, memorialize your resolution. No, that's different. That's different. No, 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 no. The, so half of the board is saying, I'm sorry, I'm not going to quantify. There's a faction of the board that's saying they want to, that they want to move forward with a normal vote. And I hear a motion to approve and just follow the normal process with one of the conditions being delineate the areas of the driveway aisle and delineate the areas for storage. That's the way I'm reading that motion. Okay? What I'm hearing other members suggest is, you know what? There's just not enough information and you want, you want, you want to hear it. The cleanest way to do that is, either you, you put forward a different motion or just ask the applicant to come back for another meeting. That's all. That's, those are your two options.
So there was a question on the motion. There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second for the motion, for the motion as made?
And before we move forward with that, because we have a full board, the alternates won't be voting, correct?
Which I just whispered to them, but thank you.
From my, from my perspective, I, from my perspective, I need to have the motion restated clearly.
What are the conditions?
Can I just make one comment? Just to, I know it's tough. The applicant is just trying to propose that should the board vote in favor of it, you do not have to accept the resolution prior to us showing the revisions that we've agreed to, uh, to your professionals. If they are in agreement, they can show it, they will circulate it to the board. If you guys are good, you adopt the resolution and the, and, and the applicant is agreeing to, to waiver of time for, as far as adopting that resolution.
So, so now finish the concept, finish the concept. If, if we do not, then what?
I gotta keep revising.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
My concern is, the vote has to, the vote should be done on the testimony on the record with conditions. If you're going to introduce additional revised plans after the vote and it's presented to the board and then some of the board members have questions on that plan, now you have to come back and provide testimony, right? You're continuing, no, no, you've already been, you've already been approved, not adopted, but now, then you're going to, then you're subject to possibly coming back for more testimony. I really don't like that process. That's cumbersome. It's not something we've done here. And I just, I, I like consistency. It's just always been that way. All right. If the board vote, the board, the board has a motion, has a, it sounds like the board has a motion to approve the application, vote on that, maybe, maybe restate the conditions, vote on that, and then, um, see where it goes. If, if that motion fails, then it's ultimately, you're asking, you're telling the applicant to come back with additional information, correct? It's a vote to approve. You're not denying the application.
I'll, I'll make this very simple and everybody, come back April 6th, be first, we'll show the plan. We'll get it submitted 10 days before the meeting and we'll see you in April's, God bless you. We'll see you on April 6th or whatever the date is.
All right, so you've said, ladies and gentlemen, public, it's here. And by the way, when that happens, given what Ms. Toni Ann said, Ms. Bradley, you'll be able to vote, um, since you sat through this. Anyway, application number two, A and A Truck Ford, deliberating final site plan 841 with use variance, 3370 will be carried to the April 6th, 2022 meeting without the requirement of, uh, further notes. Wave time through April.
Wave time, wave everything. We'll see, should be hopefully a five-minute presentation. And we're going to try our best to get Judge Hurley to vote in there. Have a good evening.
No, sir.